All right, we are backing up and we will begin with the pledge.
I'd like to be advised that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dive right in with honoring excellence. Good evening, everybody. Good to see everyone. Tonight, we're going to recognize some deserving staff. Excited about our introductions here in just a moment. We've actually worked to try to make these recognitions the last few months, but we've had a few conflicts, but we're going to make it happen tonight. As you well know, many of you that have been here for the last several years, we have the Carol Brown Award for Excellence in Professional Development. And I actually just went upstairs and pulled this off the wall. So here it is. Over the years, it's displayed fittingly in our Academic Services Department up on our fourth floor. Some heavy hitters listed on this award since 2012. As you know, Carol Brown served as the conduit for processing numerous professional development requests in Liberty Public Schools for over 25 years. This award was established in her honor as a means of recognizing her dedication to LPS. Individuals being selected for this award strive for continual self-improvement and act as a voice for professional development in their building or department. They are professionals who walk the talk when it comes to new initiatives and do what is best for students and adults throughout Liberty Public Schools. What we do each year is again, and I know Cole Lean worked with Carol for many years, and this award means so much to her along with the rest of the crew upstairs, but it's always special too to have Carol's family come back and join us for this presentation of this award each year. So with us this evening is Carol's husband, Bill, daughters Kim and Carrie, and former colleague Sue Wendell, Nan Craven, Becky Gossett. Good to see you here as well. Always love to see the smiling face of Becky Gossett. So our two recipients are here with us as well this evening, and I'm going to have them come forward, and they would be Jessica Servantis and Jen Bacon, teachers at Liberty Oaks Elementary. I'm going to read a little bit about why they are deserving, and then we will present them with their award. Jessica and Jen have dedicated and invested personal time and efforts in order to serve LPS. Specifically, they serve on the Reading Intervention Multisensory Committee. This committee has been responsible for planning and implementing two hours of state mandated professional development, advising the development of district-wide screeners, and gathering feedback for screening revisions. In addition, they have jointly and individually led district-wide PD during pineapple PD sessions. Last year, the dyslexia simulation was led and offered at Liberty North High School. In the winter and spring of 2019, screening struggling readers was offered at Liberty High School. At the building level, another dyslexia simulation was offered for staff and parents in 2018. The mentioned examples demonstrate excellence in the area of professional development. Beyond these examples, they have accumulated over 135 logged MLP hours in PD. They have also completed 200 hours of professional development in the area of reading intervention. So I think that justifies them receiving this award. So at this time, I'd like to congratulate Jessica Servantis and Jen Bacon. Make sure this is correct. And Bacon, congratulations. Great job. And ladies, I will be sure to hang this up immediately after the meeting is over. Back up on fourth floor. We are excited for yet another year of the SOAR Awards in Liberty Public Schools. It is hard to believe this is year number six of the employee recognition program, and I think it's one of our favorite programs that we have running. I want to thank Tana Campbell and the Liberty Education Foundation for being the sponsor of this program. Tana is with us here tonight. I may have her come up and, oh, there you are, Tana. I might have her come up and assist with our presentation. They are now in their second year of sponsoring, and they provide all of our staff with a $50 gift card. So we appreciate them making that even more special for our recipients. So what we have done in recent years and what we'll do tonight, we're actually going to go out into buildings later this week and present three. But for September, we like to kind of kick the program off by bringing a staff member in to present our first SOAR Award for the school year. So received a really nice nomination for Mr. Josh Baldwin, teacher at Liberty North High School. Josh, if you'd come and join me here, just embarrass you for a minute or two. Talking to Josh earlier, many of you know his brother Tim as well. These guys are a couple of all-stars here in Liberty Public Schools, and we appreciate all that they do. So yes, we receive this nomination. I'm going to just read the paragraph that was submitted, and then I might have some special guests actually present the award. "Mr. Baldwin has gone above and beyond what I could ever dream for my daughter." This is from a parent. "He has come alongside her during a time of growing and being stretched. Mr. Baldwin has made it very clear, 'If you need anything, let me know, and I am here for you,' are not empty words. She has been able to go to him many times, and he is there for her, for advice, for a safe place, and to lift her up. My daughter has created a new club this year at school, which he sponsors, and he has been her biggest encourager. He has been there for her when she has felt alone, discouraged, defeated. Each time she has gone to him, she has walked away with her head a little higher, a smile back on her face, and the confidence she needs to pursue what is before her. I am so very grateful for Mr. Baldwin and the impact he has had on my daughter's life. He is definitely one of those teachers that we will never forget.'" And I think that is why we do this program, and the stories that come out of these nominations are phenomenal, and I have a whole portal full of them that we've received just in the last few weeks since we promoted the new school year. So I mentioned we might just have a special presenter for this award, and it's actually Jennifer Main. She is the one who nominated Mr. Baldwin. I reached out to her this morning and said, "I know this is short notice, but I do want to at least give you a courtesy heads-up that we will be recognizing Mr. Baldwin tonight." And she not only brought herself, she brought her daughter Chloe and her entire family on the back row. So would you guys like to come up and officially present Mr. Baldwin with this award? And then Tana, if you'd want to come up and present him with the certificate, there you are. I'll let you do the honors. Before I conclude, one final note I wanted to make that has made this SOAR Award program so unreal is the fact that these folks over here, they hardly miss one of our presentations when we go out to buildings. And I know they can't make it all of them, but they will try to get to as many as they can, and it means so much to our employees to see them come into our buildings. And I just want to thank you all for making that extra effort to make this program so special. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dallas. The honorees can stick around. We'll take a break here in a few moments so the board can come out and personally meet you and congratulate you. We have a couple of items to take care of before that. First is 2.03 approval of agenda. Is there a move of motion?
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
If she cares.
All right, we're going to take a break here in a moment, but first, the next item when we come back from break will be public comment. If anyone wants to address the board tonight, there should be blue cards on the table right outside the door there. You fill one of those out, give it to Dr. Tucker, myself, or another board member, and we'll make sure you have an opportunity to address the board when we're back at 7:20. You fill one of those out, give it to Dr. Tucker, myself, or another board member, and we'll make sure you have an opportunity to address the board when we're back at seven twenty. Alright, we're back. And I see no blue cards, so no public comment. We are at the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided all board members and the public in advance. To assure an extensive and thorough review, items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Roll call please.
AJ?
I'm staying.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Reports from the administration.
First off, 4.01 academic services report, Dr. Heidi.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out a few things to this evening from our academic services report. This week, we will be hosting Tom Vander Ark. We're super excited to be able to have him not only walk through the school, but then also speak and be able to provide us feedback and be a part of our discussions on how to really look at high school differently and school differently. So I'd love you to join that if you can. The steam bus is up and running. We have a new person that's leading that this year, but she's doing a phenomenal job, and it's Claudia Howerton, and so she is just getting going. She also has an intern from the high school, so we're trying to practice what we preach and provide real-world interns for students in getting that going. Finally, fine art celebration, and this is a pretty big one. September eighteenth, we'll have British dignitaries coming from London that will be here and they'll be with Liberty High School. And so I'm pretty excited to have British dignitaries be a part. You'll also notice that we have three program evaluations this evening, so the A-plus program, the ELL program, and career education. As always, I just am so very appreciative of what the high schools do, especially led by Dr. Precious Kirk and Dr. April Adams, to get students enrolled in higher education opportunities and to get classes paid for, and so that's a big deal. Julian Moore is such a big advocate for this process, so thank you very much for that. Career education and Colleen and her work, and in partnership with a lot of different people, I call her the mayor. Sadly, no offense, mayor, if you're watching this this evening, but she knows everybody and gets everybody involved and invested in our schools, and it's so important with the work that she does. And then finally, ELL, Crystal Peck and Jessica, Dr. Jessica Meisenheimer and their work with that. Really tremendous revamping of the program within the last year, finding new sites to really get kids and new routes. So they're streamlined with schools that lead to their high schools, and so they're keeping friends within their community as they progress through each of the levels from elementary to high school. It was a big ask in partnership with transportation and school leaders, Dr. Andrea Dixon-Seiforn and her work in helping that come to fruition. So lots of good things, and if I can answer any questions for you, you're happy to.
Yeah, we do have that scheduled, Dr. Tucker. I think we can start tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, let's see.
Eight o'clock, eight o'clock here, and then we're going to take the man with everybody so that we can talk in between, but you're welcome to meet us, we're gonna start at Liberty North at eight thirty, and spend forty minutes there, go to Liberty Academy for about thirty minutes, and then head over to Liberty High School after that, and then come back here and discuss what we saw.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Tony. Additional questions of Dr. Heidi and academic services?
Yeah, the A-plus program specifically, it looks like we've had some success in increasing completers and that percentage as we go on. This whole participant non-completive, we plan to drop the hour.
They go to schools that aren't A-plus, so they might go to MU or KU or wherever, but they don't use their A-plus hours, so they've completed it, but they've chosen a different route.
Yeah. To that end, though, there are a number of institutions that might qualify for a scholarship. That might sit outside of, so you may not capture it with the A-plus system because it's not a community college, but they're recognizing the work that goes into it.
And speaking to that too, I'm really glad that you brought that up, Dr. Tucker. On Monday, the A-plus program is expanding and providing even further dollars to dual credit and dual enrollment opportunities for kids. And so I know Cindy Sullivan and Colleen Jones and Kelly Solari are going to go be a part of that presentation and hear what they're doing to expand the A-plus program, so we're excited about that as well.
Anything else regarding services? Thank you, Dr. Heidi. Next up then, there's a 4.02 in finance.
Thank you, good evening. I have a donation to bring to you tonight. It's a fifteen hundred dollar monetary donation from the M. Brody and Amy Prashan Family Travel Gift Fund. Seven hundred and fifty of that is to the Shoal Creek Classroom Supply Fund, and seven hundred and fifty of that was to go for a ball pit on Shoal Creek's play down, so we do appreciate that gift from the Prashan Family Trust. Couple of other things to note for you, the other finance committee did a little last night, had a great meeting. They don't have any questions to bring to you, they're excited about the strategic plan. We talked a lot about that and looked over it, and they are very excited to follow the path that it will take. And they are also very interested in the facility master planning process that's coming up. I did mention to them that last week we had a meeting with George K. Baum, David Evans, Steve Anderson, and Dr. Tucker and myself. In conjunction with the facility master planning process, we are going to be looking at our debt and the opportunities that we will have and the capacity that we will have going forward that will eventually be able to meet any needs that are brought up from the facility master plan. So they're very interested in all of that, and of course, there will be more to come on that front for you as we get further into the year and the process. I did also want to remind you that George K. Baum, at the end of this month, will become steeple. So we are dealing with the same people, just a new brand for them. So when you see that come your way, same people, same thing, new name. So I'm more excited for them about that. Also, we, this past beginning of September, did make the conversion to the new accounting codes that are required under DESI. Jill Maloney spearheaded that, it was a huge project, and I think that it was carried out in a very, very good manner. Went very seamlessly. The materials that was provided to the buildings and the budget managers has enabled them to just hit the ground running with the new codes, even though they're super long, they have embraced it and are very happy with the way that has gone. There's still some cleanup of reports to expand them. You'll note on the supporting documents that we provided to you tonight, the new codes are on there, and they're long, lots of digits, lots of, lots of new ways to pull information that will come your way and the building level reports from the ASPR, so I did want to thank Jill for her hard work and the lots of time that she spent getting that to happen. I do appreciate that very much. The one last bit of information, Westbrook and Company will be here the week of October seventh to start our district audit. The hope is that we have that wrapped up and presented to you by the end of the day. But I have to just say.
And you cannot overemphasize the appreciation for the services department, their calendar structuring. One thing to wrap your head around in Missouri accounting, to go through revisions is another layer, and hopefully they don't change anything in action, so thanks to Cindy. Questions for Cindy?
Just with regards to the bonds, Cindy, it looks like the investment earnings, is that roughly on track for what we thought we would get off the menu?
It's actually ahead of what we thought.
Okay.
And that's due to basically timing of the spending of the funds. When we submitted the draw schedule to Mosa, it was a little more aggressive than what it's actually turned out to be.
Great, great. And to add to what Cindy shared in the initial meeting with George K. Baum, we sat down, had a good conversation with them as far as where we're at, what we're seeing in the future, but then also tasked them to run a couple scenarios in projecting out the little ways, various parameters. We will come back for the full board via study session to follow up on those conversations, to play a lot of different scenarios as we project out. It's an integral piece to the facilities and demographic projection conversation that we're getting ready to embark on over this fall. Other questions of Cindy? Again, thank you to finance. Human resources, Dr. Vodorov?
Yes, thank you. The bulk of our report this evening is on new business, so I won't go into any details with regard to that, but I do want to update something with regard to the premium differential. When this went to press, it was prior to the deadline of September fifteenth, so I have some updated numbers. What's on the report has a total of seventy employees who would be assessed the six hundred dollars. That number has gone down to forty-nine, just from the thirteenth to the start of this week on Monday, crunching those numbers. So thank you to Rebecca Fisher and all the work she does, really chasing down employees, making sure that those people who are not voluntarily participating in our program are really doing it by choice and not by error. The other thing I want to point out is that once the insurance renewal is all finalized, that you're seeing tonight for First Read, the benefits open enrollment window will start Wednesday, October thirtieth. It'll run through Tuesday, November twelfth, for all eligible employees to enroll. I say that because we can't state and restate that enough to help our employees really understand there's a tight window for insurance renewals. Obviously, you've got all of the information presented in the H.R. reports. If you have any questions, you're glad to answer those.
Questions for Dr. Vodorov?
Thank you.
You may or may not be aware, we do a leadership academy, which will be this third day. I just want to thank Dr. Vodorov for guiding the syllabus, as well as a number of strategic leadership team that steps in and provides a review of their area of expertise, and so we've got a number of leading figures come through that and taking roles with them, which are good and successful, so I think that's a great opportunity to grow our leadership.
Thank you.
Next up then, operations, Mr. New.
Thank you. Couple items I wanted to highlight. First, both the operations report and the major projects update is loaded on board docs. One thing I wanted to pull out of the operations report, and it's noted in there under health services, a couple pretty major changes in the work that they do based on some policy changes, and that would be Board Policy JHCB. And the first being that we will now begin stocking Narcan, which is the emergency treatment for opioid overdose. And so that's a pretty big change, so it's kind of similar to what we have for EpiPens, once we're allowed to have those in stock. So this will add kind of to that supply. Just wanted to know, we talked about this a couple times through this process, that if it is applied to somebody that is not in crisis and maybe having some other issue, they're not at risk with the administration of that narcotic. The other thing I wanted to point out is that we are also going to be allowing for the administration of CBD oil with pretty tight restrictions, so our staff can administer it if several tests are met, one being eighteen years old, obviously permission from parent, and a diagnosis of epilepsy. There's a couple other ones in there as well, so that's a pretty big shift for us, but we're ready and prepared to do that. So special thanks to Kathy Eldermyer and her team for kind of leading us through that transition. Also wanted to point out that this is always the time of year when we transition with air conditioning and, you know, kind of that season that's kind of going up and down on us, and usually what challenges that is over the course of the summer, we do pretty significant repairs to AC systems, we put new systems in, then we have a pretty intricate control systems in place, so we're always kind of modulating and trying to get everything working right. And so usually this time of year, we're still kind of learning through that. So we've had some inconveniences and frustrations, but just wanted to assure you all that, that we're kind of working hard through that. We're pretty close to getting where we need to be. Last, construction update, all the active bond projects and some of the capital work that's finishing up. First of all, the middle school in Shoal Creek Elementary, those spaces should be complete here within the next couple weeks, if not sooner. The Liberty High Oxygen Wrestling Area by mid-October, maybe a little bit beyond that, but I think that wrestling area should be done by mid-October. That's the priority right now. The Franklin Kitchen, we thought we were close on a couple occasions of getting that, the certificate of occupancy and compliance. We've bumped into a couple things along the way. I've been assured as of this afternoon that we're one or two days off before they will be using the kitchen, but rest assured, they're still feeding the students, just in an inconvenient way. The Liberty High School PAC project is still on budget, on schedule to complete end of summer of twenty, so we'll be ready for the fall of twenty. And then the Liberty North Wing should be finished before the start of the second semester this year, so January of twenty. And then last, for those who noticed, the PAC, we're doing some pretty heavy work in here, that whole atrium and window areas is in the process of being removed. That will be complete in November, and if you've noticed, we just walled off kind of where that was open before. That was finished up today. If anybody has seen the margin, let me know.
Any question?
Clarification from the state, so Narcan, we are going to be stocking as a district.
Right.
Any CBD oil will have to be provided.
Correct, that's correct.
Other question? Just a couple of additions to my report. We shared with you last week that we would be hosting a press conference for Smithville School District, North Kansas School, North Kansas City School District, and Blue Springs School District announcing a partnership with Missouri State University. And so we held that press conference, and the news is that MSU is offering a scholarship for dual credit, up to six credits per semester for students, for all of those who are in the U.S. or in the United States. So we're excited to remember that partnership. We hope that we will be able to remember that partnership with other universities, and about expanding dual credit and access to college credit on this program, and so we appreciate that it's marketing the trip to Kansas City very much. That starts the meeting, so this evening is the consent and the item, that is the items that we approved, so we appreciate approving that, so that we can start getting the board out as early as the spring semester. Today is board meeting day, and so this morning, we started the morning early with the Northland Center for Advanced Professional Studies Board, and one of the conversations that they are having is bringing back a board showcase. If you've been on the board for some time, you'll recall a few years ago, we held a showcase evening at Cerner in which we highlighted a student panel and shared the experiences that they are having with Northland Center for Advanced Professional Studies. We held another one in North Kansas City Hospital, looking at tentatively hosting some things the latter part of November or the first part of this year. So I don't have a save the date yet for you, but just keep that in mind, and we're looking to plan for that with Mr. Kisker, now serving as the executive director of North Kansas City. Another item to follow up with, at our study session earlier this month, we shared early efforts in and around establishing our legislative priorities. You will likely start seeing more of our education associations and partners finalizing their priorities, whether it's the Missouri School Board Association, some of our teacher groups for Missouri Association of School Administrators regionally. The Greater Kansas City Cooperative School Districts has gathered already and met about drafting their legislative priorities, so we'll kind of keep in tune. We'll probably see coming out of those associations as well as advocating for the innovation that we strive for as a district, and then also believe our value for the entire state. New this year is a revision to our annual performance report, and we've shared that with you tentatively in terms of those changes that are coming. So rather than the formalized district score indicating our performance on a scale of one hundred and forty points, that then culminates in a percentage that kind of classifies your accreditation level, we're now going to be moving away from that as a state and really looking at more specific standards tied to MSEP five, but then also as we transition to MSEP six, that new APR will evolve, or kind of modify a little bit as MSEP six comes around in the next year or so. The release of information tied to the new APR is slated to be finalized on October tenth, so just prior to our October board meeting, we'll get a first look at that and be able to share that information with you as well as with our public. Following that, we will be having some conversations in and around our scorecard as to what our new scorecard looks like. We've had some preliminary conversations in how we link that up to our strategic plan, really focusing on three key areas. The area of academic performance certainly, coupled with social-emotional learning, what we see with our students pre-K through grade twelve, but then also looking at how we can craft some metrics in and around experiential learning. So really crafting our new scorecard, modifying our dashboard to be aligned to those three key areas. Last thing that I wanted to share is to really thank the board for your participation over the last couple of years in helping tell our story, whether it's presentations with the Missouri School Boards Association or the National School Board Association Conference. We've been able to tell and communicate the work that's going on in our classrooms on behalf of our teachers and staff, students and families. We're gonna do that again just a week from now at the MSBA conference. We have two presentations slated, the first is entitled Leveraging Your Learning Network, which falls in line with our book study work and focus that we've been doing in our study sessions over this last year. The second one is entitled Creating a Culture of Innovation, and that continues to evolve within Liberty Public Schools as it should in terms of our strive for excellence. Something unique this year tied to the conference is we will have a couple of student showcases that will be presenting or sharing kind of their work on Saturday in terms of the student showcase. So I appreciate academic services helping us coordinate, I believe, two groups that will be going down and sharing at the conference next week. With that, let's certainly open it up to any questions that you all have.
Any questions? All right, we have one item of unfinished business, the Opus Graduate Profile and District Strategic Plan.
So it was about a year ago that we started having conversations about our then-existing strategic plan sunsetting and starting to think differently about our strategic plan work, and how we might be able to embark on a more flexible, agile, responsive strategic plan, and trying to find a couple of partners to help craft that work. So we wanted it to certainly be equity-centered, we wanted it to be focused- So we wanted it to certainly be Equity Center. We wanted it to be focused on experiential learning. And through a vetting process and our formal R F P process, we landed on our partner, G M E Associates. Fast forward to March of last spring, and what has really been relatively fast-tracked when you think about traditional school district strategic planning and comprehensive school improvement plans from March to present, we've been incredibly busy soliciting feedback through surveys, hosting a variety of focus groups with the help of our consultants. In addition to that, hosting the World Cafe event and then working to try to craft the document. You saw it in June for one of the first times as far as a draft. You've seen it multiple times again at study sessions. And so we're excited to bring it for you this evening in its finalized format as of right now, whatever time it is, at seven forty-six. Knowing that as soon as this is approved, our intent is for it to be a living, breathing document and for it to be iterative. And so as we embark the rest of this weekend and the next month to come, it will likely evolve. And so it will be up to us to be able to bring those items for you as that strategic plan again will be an iterative work. There's another component to the strategic plan, and that is our graduate profile. And we really want to lead with the graduate profile. The graduate profile, as we've thought about how to communicate it and how to message it, accompanies a diploma. So not only does a child receive a diploma at the point of graduation, or I should say a young adult. A young adult receive that diploma at the point of graduation, but hopefully along with the academic knowledge glean, they've got a variety of skill sets that they can attest to, whether it's in a portfolio or in an interview, resume building experience within the areas of, yes, academic content and knowledge, but then couple that with personal skills, professional skills, entrepreneurial skills, but then also cultural skills. And so we really want to lead with that when we talk about our strategic plan. And this is what we aspire to equip students with a variety of skill sets within those five areas. Within the profile that's posted to board docs, you have a brief description of each. We've spent a lot of time working that and trimming in and trying to find just the right terminology. There's a good chance we might come up with a revision or two as we continue to kind of work the plan and the profile. In addition to those descriptions under each of those five categories, you have some skills that are captured. It's not only important to approve that and set it in public facing, but then the real work begins as we start working from that to create a continuum of what does it look like to achieve those skills? What's that continuum look like as early as pre-K and our early childhood experiences to our elementary experiences to our middle level as well as to our high school experiences? As we think about that, there will be pieces that we already have in place that we can plug into that continuum. But then I think pretty quickly, we'll be able to identify what those gaps are. And so we are excited about that work and bringing that forward with the board and also partnering with a variety of networks and school districts to be able to fill in those pieces as we think about building students and their skill sets or their toolbox in and around that profile. Shifting a little bit to the strategic plan then, as you're well aware, there are twenty-two vision statements that come with twenty-two deliverables that have twenty-two accompanying plans. With the understanding that our vision statements will likely remain, but those deliverables will evolve over the course of the next couple of years. As a reminder, our areas within the strategic plan are focusing on teaching, learning, professional growth of the adults in the organization, leadership, but then also the value and partnership that we see with our wider community. Our next steps tied to the strategic plan upon your approval will be to, as I mentioned, create that graduate profile continuum, connect with schools and departments as we message out the strategic plan and the profile and create that connection to all of our campuses as well as each of our departments. In addition, another step to that is looking at our scorecard and dashboard a little bit differently as I shared earlier. Being able to monitor and report out our progress in a variety of methods, but certainly for the board's awareness that then has implications on how we approach program evaluation differently. And then the last piece that I would say is there are some publication pieces related to this. We've talked about a vision narrative and continuing to message that out as well as some marketing materials, whether it's a new banner like the one we see behind us, or posters in our buildings, or pieces that we can then put on our website or pass out at some of our civic gatherings. So that's a little bit of our next steps. But as I mentioned, as soon as we get our approval from the Board of Education, we are off and running and working to operationalize this. So thank you for your participation in this process. Thank you for the time you've spent, whether it's in meetings or completing surveys or providing that critical feedback that we need to craft and develop our strategic plan and profile. Appreciate the board's help.
Any questions?
Trim has been our trim. We've tried to trim and focus on, on wordsmithing. To the feedback that the board's provided, we really tasked our strategic leadership team for the purpose of looking at each recommendation and either being able to provide an answer, incorporate the feedback, or in some instances, realize and recognize, okay, this is an idea that has merit, but might be a year or two down the road. So we've trapped all of that feedback. Appreciate the work and the time that the board's taken.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Roll call please.
A.J.
Yes.
Scott. David.
Yes.
Nick. Amy.
Yes. Completes unfinished business. We move on to new business now with board policy revisions.
Thank you, by the way, for that approval on the graduate profile and strategic plan. Under the board policy revisions, there's three components here. There are a few boards that you're seeing this evening for a second time for your consideration and approval. That's policy A C and E F. In addition to those two approvals, we're asking that you rescind policies G C P C and G D P C. And then the third component to the board policy revisions is that you have a couple of documents or items, policies that are presented, excuse me, presented to you. For first read that you will see a little bit later on in October at our October, October regular monthly meeting. So we just presented those to you for a cool and easy.
What did you pull over to the chair?
Something. I'm not sure. Thanks.
All right. Any questions before we move on? Now, ready for motion.
Well, one question, if the policies were rescinded, there must be, there must be a request for the policies to be replaced. There is already. And from what we've heard, the search is very.
Dr. Vogel, are those H R items or the rescinded policies?
Yeah, the recensions, they are personnel policies and they're just recensions because of policy. Another policy is fully, it's.
So the other policies are.
The catch.
Yes.
The catches.
Correct. We previously adopted. Yeah, no, that's a great question. So we previously adopted on, on second read, the policy that supplants them for these two policies.
Yes. I mean, the board approved policies A C and E F and rescind policies G C P C.
Discussion on the motion. Roll call please.
A.J.
Yes.
Scott. David. Nick.
Yes.
Amy. Yes.
Yes.
Asia Grace.
Legal Services Agreements.
This item's presented to you to take into consideration legal counsel related to our work with special education, personnel matters, or human resources, as well as our general counsel. It's been interesting to stay close to this, so I asked him to report out to the board.
Yes, briefly, this would be asked to extend all three contracts and relationships that we have with these three firms for another year. The only change monetarily with any of the three relates to the human resources, human resources, and toothpickingy with a small adjustment of five dollar increase per hour, no fee. And then just to let you know is that our plan right now is to work with the course of next summer and put out an R F P. It's been four years, so it's time to kind of do that again. And so we'll have conversations in and around what that might look like as we pull the R F P together so that this time next year, it will be under that umbrella of a more formal and open process. If that, if you have any questions.
Questions?
Ready for, ready for motion then?
I move the board approve legal services agreements of Greenwood LLC, Toothpenny Cooper, Lowham, and Black Salt. Yes, that can see.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Roll call please.
A.J.
Yes.
David. Scott.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Six point oh three local compliance.
This is an annual item and has a, is shared within board docs. You have a couple of attachments. One is the certification statement as well as just the planning in and of itself with the regulations. This is a kind of a boilerplate piece provided to this by the Department of Health and Security Education. So we present that to you this evening.
Questions?
Discussion. Roll call please.
A.J.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Amy. Nick.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes. Insurance utilization and recommendation.
So this is one that we want to spend some time on this evening before we dive into kind of the preliminary of our insurance utilization and recommendation. We want to remind you that this is shared with you this evening for first read. Take the next several weeks as we approach October to provide us with any questions or additional clarification. Before we get into the specifics, I do especially want to thank Dr. Vogel, his team down in H R, as well as Cindy Sullivan, her team, all of Team Liberty. And as soon as we start school, they dive into insurance and start having some pretty integral conversations as it pertains to taking care of faculty and staff with the benefits that they are afforded. So we appreciate their work and certainly appreciate the board, the work that you do in terms of providing us for our employees in the district. As we provide information to you, last week, we shared some of the specifics related to the recommendation as well as what's provided for you in board docs. But as we talk about insurance recommendation, it deals with medical, dental, vision, life and disability, flexible spending account. So to kind of hit the high points within that, as we talk about the medical side, the renewal increase initially came in at twenty point eight with a little bit of a decrease related to A C A and some potential recoupment of funds to the tune of about two point six percent. There's a little uncertainty with that depending upon what the legislature does, so we're watching that pretty closely. We did take it to market and looked at a quote from Aetna and their I thirty-five network, and that came in at about twelve point five percent above our current pricing. And through some negotiating with Holmes Murphy and Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're able to land at about a nine point nine percent above current with those taxes included as it relates to the C O. Another component to the medical insurance coverage was collaboration with Spira Care Centers added as a care option for our high deductible health plan participants. Those are the summary pieces to the medical insurance renewal. In addition, with dental, the twenty twenty increase will be about six percent, which is a prior negotiated rate cap. Claims still performed relatively well with a loss ratio of about a hundred and four percent, which is still up, but it's a little bit better than two thousand and nineteen. Anticipate taking that to market sometime by the end of twenty twenty-one, depending on how things go in the next, the next plan year. As it relates to vision, we did have a rate guarantee through twenty twenty-one. In addition to that, there was a one hundred and one percent loss ratio, which is a little bit of an improvement over two thousand and eighteen. As it relates to our life and disability coverages, we do have a rate guaranteed with the entity as the standard through twenty twenty. And we'll look at putting that to market sometime prior to twenty twenty-one as well. And then the last piece that I would mention would be our flexible saving account, our flexible spending account. We remain with Surenci as the name of our carrier, and that's been a good experience, a good relationship with them. And we have rates guaranteed through twenty twenty-one there as well. There's a whole lot more, but those are the highlights. Certainly want to invite Holmes Murphy. Matt's here this evening. Dr. Vogel, if you want to introduce Matt to share where we're at.
So Matt Wheeler represents Holmes Murphy. They are our broker and work on our behalf to negotiate those rates down. As Dr. Tucker mentioned, the, the first go around, just with the scrub that Blue Cross Blue Shield does of medical would have garnered a plus twenty percent rate increase. And thanks to the team that confirmed the negotiation, that down in the single digits. So I will let Matt go into the utilization and you've got a full report there. He'll highlight just a few slides out of that slide deck and kind of talk about the state of insurance, really not just to Liberty Public Schools, but the state of insurance really across their entire book of business as he does. So Matt.
Dr. Tucker, board members, thank you for having me here tonight on behalf of Holmes Murphy. Just want to also just give thanks to the Team Liberty. They did a tremendous job. They're always extremely discerning about opportunity to work with that team for, I think, six, seven years or so. There's still very many familiar faces on the team. There were some new faces this year. And there was a lot of wonderful questions asked and a lot of good dialogue. While Dr. Tucker summarized kind of the final positioning where recommendation came from Team Liberty. I think as the recommendation outlined, there was a lot of healthy discussion around how plans should be subsidized, how to inform members about the availability of high deductible health plans, the health savings accounts, about how individuals' utilization may be impacted by the different plan options for what they may pay by payroll, what they may be able to access through subsidies in the health savings account. So there were, there was a lot of good discussion involved. A lot of it was centered around this slide that you see in front of you, which really just takes a look at where the overall macro utilization of Liberty Public Schools' healthcare is at. The, the key kind of metrics on this slide are, one, the red line on the, on the page summarizes where your contractual claims liability is that you're purchasing from requests. And so this has been an ongoing discussion over the last couple of, of plan years. If you can see on this slide, if you look about the beginning of January two thousand and eighteen, the end of two thousand and seventeen, there was a bit of a high watermark on that yellow or greenish line there, which was the district's actual claims utilization versus the contract. So claims exceeded the contract to a very high degree. That's positive in the sense that you're paying a premium line that's tied to the red, but it is a little bit foreboding as regards future increases. So at that point in time in two thousand and eighteen, there, there's a little bit of, of a pivot on this slide that although the claims were substantially up, the claims lines stayed or the premium lines stayed relatively flat. And that's because Team Liberty and the district concerned at that point in time to move to the narrow network offering to cost efficiency. And so what's happened is some really actually positive things from utilization influence. Since that network has been adopted, it has done what it, what it has promised to do, which was, was kind of level the facility costs of inpatient and outpatient services, which we look at on the next slide. What hasn't happened since that time is while the claims have leveled out, they didn't drop to the floor. And so it's been a process over the last couple of renewals of, two thousand and nineteen was actually a tax premium year. Two thousand and twenty was really the first year with when the gloves were off with no guarantee of what pricing would be. So a little bit of market influence with some negotiation, fighting a little bit of uphill battle with the A C A taxes. That's where it ended up wrestling to the ground at nine point nine percent of the decline. You can see on this slide, the other key metric is over the last twelve months, basically it's performing about seven percent above where that target is. If we subtract the A C A taxes out and we take the adjustment, it's about adjusting it right up to where that claims are. Year to date, it hasn't performed quite as well. We'll look at that on the next slide. It's been about eleven percent over the contract performance through the first seven months of two thousand and nineteen. That's been heavily influenced by, we had this discussion last year at this time, and it's been a very common theme across much of our book of business in Kansas City. For those customers, very similar to Liberty Public Schools, that have done what you can to influence the cost of care by trying to use a cost efficient network. It's, it's delivered in minimizing the outpatient and inpatient pricing, which you see on this slide. Over the last two years for Liberty Public Schools, we've actually had a decrease in pricing for inpatient and outpatient facility costs. However, that's been counteracted by the increase in specialty pharmacy costs. We bumped that together here in physician and prescription buckets. Because a lot of these specialty medications for cancer, for instance, are no longer effective. So you can see that what has happened with, with the district's utilization is, is the prescription uptick has, has really negatively impacted the utilization. the prescription uptick has, has really negatively impacted the utilization of the offset to savings from the facility. So we'll see what remains over the next quarter or two. One big change for the district and its members is that Blue Cross of Kansas City is moving to a new pharmacy partner in Optum. One of the things that Optum specializes in is trying to influence the clinical outcomes in the specialty space. Uh, there may be some changes applied to see how they're trying to influence some of those expenses. That would certainly be welcome for how this is positioned, uh, because at least from a plan design standpoint, from a stewardship standpoint, Team Liberty or Liberty Public School members are making the right decisions in terms of generic use of descriptions, in terms of using narrower scripts, so all of those things are very positive. Finally, we just kind of close with, uh, the enrollment breakdown across the plans. The reason why this was included, this was a big topic of conversation in Team Liberty as there was a lot of discussion around how should the employee contributions by payroll, how should the district subsidy be positioned to try to influence members' decision-making when it comes to what plan is right for them to enroll in. You can see that enrollment has been relatively constant in these plans over the last couple of years. Uh, the district plan that is subsidized in that yellow or green slice of the pie, so not surprisingly, the most people are enrolled where the district subsidizes the plan. Uh, we spent some time with Team Liberty talking about, in reality, a lot of times, depending upon folks' utilization profile, the high deductible health plan may even be better for them physically, uh, but because of the way the subsidy is structured, it probably just doesn't give enough of an impetus to think about which plan folks are electing. So there's going to be a big emphasis on, on this cycle around education, around how the plans are structured, around how someone's use may be impacted by the health savings account contribution or offset their expenses. So, uh, that was a big discussion. Any questions just about that generally?
Any questions, Matt? How about our message about, uh, making the Spire Care Centers, the mission for each of these programs? How, how will that?
Okay, so initially, the Spire Care Centers were initially implemented by Blue Cross of Kansas City in two thousand and eighteen, and their concept was to use it, uh, a care center that would provide no cost obstacles to members utilizing it, so they would walk through the door and have no upfront cost exposure. Uh, that cannot operate in that design on a high deductible health plan because the IRS says you have to have an upfront cost to utilize it. What, what, what was adopted in two thousand and nineteen by, by Blue Cross was to come up with a fair market value, which is an IRS guideline to say if, if a member is a high deductible health plan participant, they have to pay for non-prevented services in at least some concept of fair market value. And so that became in place in two thousand and nineteen on the Spire Care Centers. So it's really a benefit to, uh, for Liberty Public School participants that are in the high deductible health plan that choose, they're not, they're not compelled to, but if they want to take back, take advantage of the Spire Care Centers, they can access that at the present fair, fair market value of sixty dollars. So they do have to pay an upfront fee if they're using the services at those care centers. But generally speaking, sixty dollars is less than what someone would pay at a primary care physician that, that might average somewhere between eighty-five or ninety-five dollars after discounted services. And additionally, a lot of the services provided at the Spire Care Center are bundled. Um, so, um, while the most, uh, most proximate care center doesn't have an X-ray, uh, unit, there are other facilities that do. So if you go visit one of those, um, you know you need a diagnosis to see if you have a broken bone, uh, then you can go visit one of the other care centers and for that same bundle fee of sixty dollars, you can access the medical services in the X-ray at a very cost effective price. So that was the thought process around, uh, why to take advantage of that Spire Care option, uh, paired alongside the high deductible health plan, as well it will give folks an additional incentive to consider it, because at least you have a known cost, uh, when you're accessing the medical system for what the, what the services will be presented with.
I think it's also important to note why we didn't bolt that onto the EPO plans, the, the, uh, cost versus benefit of doing that, so we only attach it to the right.
Yeah, so there's not as much flexibility with the present EPO plan. So presently, there's, there's co-pay exposures on the EPO plan if, if folks go, uh, are hospitalized, if they go to see outpatient services, but they're fairly, they're fairly small in nature. Um, the reality is, is bolting it onto the EPO plan, it would, it would basically necessitate a complete redesign of that plan. Uh, it would make most of the services not incurred in the Spire Care Center subject to a higher deductible, which, which participants on that plan today do not face. And so with thirty-seven percent participation in the membership, um, that just seemed to bridge too far to bolt it onto that plan and too much disruption from the plan design reality. And the folks that are, are purchasing that plan, they are paying and having a payroll impact even as an employee only participant, so they're, they're paying a premium upgrade to purchase that plan. It just didn't seem to make sense because unless folks were using, uh, the Spire Care Center in that model, it would be subject to a higher deductible. And the general metrics are, or anticipation is, for high deductible health plan participants, about twenty percent of members may actually use the care center on the standalone version, about seventy-five percent will, uh, but there was some, there was some doubt whether that was going to be the case on, on.
So why somebody gets, uh, high enough, uh, knowledge on Spire Care still available at sixty dollars, no insurance throughout lifetime?
So similar to, the plan design here at the school district is a three thousand dollar deductible on the high deductible health plan. And so similar to whether or not you are accessing care through a Spire Care Center or elsewhere, once a member reaches the three thousand dollar out of pocket deductible, then they would have no cost exposure for services included as long as it's within the network, and that would be true with the Spire Care Centers too. Um, so, um, let's say for instance, if someone, um, had a surgery out of the gate in January or a delivery, and they'd met their individual deductible, uh, of three thousand dollars in the month of January, then they would actually be able to access the Spire Care Center and cost to, uh, to use the services.
This narrow network, and a couple of years ago, we went to the narrow network with cost savings purposes, no feedback or pushback, um, kind of using those facilities over the top of the cap.
I think there's a healthy level of discussion about it every year. I think last year at this time, uh, there was entertained if a parallel network option could be offered alongside Blue Select Plus. We looked at that pricing at the time and, um, I, I'd have to, I'd, I'd want to go back and look what the pricing was just off the top of my head. It was a pretty big disparity and, and you can see why from the facility differential in price. Um, so it was determined at that time by Team Liberty that it didn't seem to make sense to offer it as a parallel offering because of this separate price difference. Um, this year, there was some more discussion around it, um, because there's been some discussion around whether or not that network is going to stay on from a facility standpoint. Are HCA facilities or specialty space facilities going to be a part of the network? Um, so, you know, it's, it's, it, it's actually a, a very conscientious conversation to hold where you see Liberty, um, Team Liberty members realizing that everyone is stakeholders, um, in this school district, that, um, while members on that team have made sacrifices to change positions, um, they did so because they knew that it was going to help maintain cost further down the road. And so it's a healthy discussion. I think everyone would wish that the network could be larger at the same price. That option doesn't exist today. The hope is, is that it, that it gets there and there's some change or break in, in the cycle to where that could happen.
Is that number plan, uh, books, both ISB, like, hospitals, and, 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 uh, so it's, 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 so, so I don't know.
Yeah, clear. I think the initial, the initial assessment of that two years ago, there was about an eighty-five percent overlap of overall services utilized within this, within this sub-network. So, I mean, it's, it's not fair to call it narrow from that standpoint because, you know, for Team Liberty members, it was heavily utilized. To that end though, I mean, there's some outlier, liar folks, happen to be at least some are resident, there's certainly at least some, you know, and that was part of the discussion on the high deductible health plan too, is, hey, there's a Spire Care Center there, if someone's a high deductible health plan member, they can have, you know, more local proximate access to primary care, uh, at a different facility location, so, um, very informed discussion with Team Liberty that you're going to discuss.
Other questions, Matt? So again, as you digest the information shared this evening, over the next several weeks, please let us know what other questions you have, um, we can work to get you any clarification. Just as a reminder in respect to timeline, uh, Dr. Vogel, I mentioned this earlier, on track to bring this back to you for consideration in our October regular meeting, and then upon your approval, initiate that window for approval of this October motion. So again, thank you, Matt, and thank you everyone participating in getting this recommendation to us this evening.
All right, last item of new business is six point oh five contracts purchased goods.
Uh, you have several that are presented to you this evening with varying kind of nuances to them. Mr. Anderson, a state close to that, it's a good point on these two elements.
Uh, yes, we have a handful of contracts that are being requested to be approved on first read, uh, and just real quickly, there are reasons behind that. The first one is the, uh, Willa Key, uh, which is a special services, and that's just because of the urgency of providing services to a student. There is the, uh, the Puppet, uh, the Messner Puppet Theater. We decided that this could be accelerated because the, the schedule is such that we couldn't wait another month until October. Uh, the next one is the Educator's Handbook. I think there was some comfort level bringing this forward on first read because this went through an RFP process. It's been a very deliberative kind of consultation with various departments across the district, selecting this group to partner with us and work with our school on, uh, issues related to, uh, discipline management. Just giving down a little bit, uh, one that kind of got up a little bit down there is we have a contract with, uh, that we're requesting a first read with Drury, uh, in its suites, and it's related to a, an upcoming, very soon arrangement with the, uh, LHS cheer team, uh, so we're just trying to accommodate that and, and have them legally within a contract before they stay there. So that's why that's been expurgated. Last two items are really simply just, um, emergency repairs that the facilities, folks had to, uh, uh, take care of through over the past few weeks. Uh, one related to fence repair, they had relate, uh, was the storm damage that came through, um, back a few weeks ago, or a month or so ago. Then we also had some, uh, elevator issues at the academy that we had to kind of step in and bring some folks in, so all those items explained, uh, but would appreciate consideration on first read, Matt.
Questions on those?
Right, we're moved. We're approved, we're, we're not sure. We go out, we, we have the puppet theater, we, we have the table number, we're going to the streets, I know it's okay, it's, 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 uh, seeing, uh, these are, uh, elevator.
Second. Discussion on motion. Roll call please.
AJ.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Emily.
And Andy.
Yes.
Sherry.
That concludes the new business. We are at seven point oh one upcoming meetings. You'll see a list there, um, next, is it next week, MSBA Fall Conference? And the next time we'll be together is October first for study session. Have any questions or comments?
We should also have an, uh, either an inbox or a link tomorrow to specify what it is to see if there's efficiency.
And board remarks. Um, Liberty Education Foundation is hosting a tailgate at the Liberty, Liberty North football game this Friday, so stop by their tent, five to seven, and look for people wearing shirts about that color. They'll be there, uh, members of the foundation board. And then October nineteenth is the, uh, educational court event being hosted across the board again, as I repeated that last year, and, uh, be fun again this year with some new twists to it. And tickets are still available? Yes. Limited tickets available, so get yours soon. Any other board remarks?
Uh, I'll just say the district strategic plan, I, as in, I guess it's been a process and yet to see it, but I know it's been challenging for everybody, um, and it's been awesome to see all of you kind of embrace it in our matrix. I'm, I'm excited. I think it's, it's great. I think it's a totally different way to do things, uh, in the school system, uh, through those areas.
Especially, I mean, there is some more comment, especially people watching, it would be a very good decision, but you've seen it, and seen it, provided feedback, and seen it, and provided feedback again, um, and thank you to everyone, because I think we pushed you a little bit this time around, so I think you can be open in response, I think the end product is the second term.
Not the real world, the real world.
Well, yes, there is that.
The work in progress.
Yes.
It's a weird.
Thank you.
Any other remarks? Are they ready for motion to adjourn?
I move the board adjourn.
Second.
Roll call please.
AJ.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Sherry.
Board adjourn.